Now reconveniences Wycomico County Council for December 5th work session. The next item on the agenda is the Personnel Manual. If you could let the public know who you are, please, that'd be great, starting with you, Ed, I guess.
Ed Baker, former county attorney.
Sharon Morris, former Assistant Director of Administration.
Matt Gremer, forward, former council administrator.
Great, thanks.
That's the three has-beens. Or once upon a time were.
May I?
Yes, we're starting with chapter.
We're doing chapters fifteen through nineteen, correct?
Sixteen through nineteen.
Fifteen.
Fifteen. Fifteen through nineteen.
Fifteen to.
I was trying to make things move ahead a little bit.
Fifteen will move quickly. Fifteen is the Employee Assistance Program, otherwise known as EAP. It's a program designed to assist employees who may be struggling with life choices, alcohol and substance abuse, emotional or sexual abuse, financial difficulties and marital problems, family concerns or stress management. The program is designed to confidentially provide an avenue where employees can seek assistance. If the employee is referred by the supervisor, then the supervisor then gets documentation as to the outcomes of their treatment. If the employee goes on their own, they can do that as well. The information is confidential. And their initial assessment for service for short-term counseling is paid both by the employee and health insurance if it's a longer term. The employee's health insurance plan covers costs. The employee is allowed to use administrative leave to attend the counseling sessions up to three. And then after that, the employee has to use vacation time and/or sick leave in order to make the sessions if they're doing normal work hours. This does not take away from any disciplines that may be impending for the employee who has behavior that's not becoming to the job performance. Again, everything is confidential and it's a volunteer program. Questions?
Who's the local provider?
It's contracted and that's subject to change.
Is it a company? Is it an individual? Do we know? I'm just curious.
It is an individual, but I believe it's also a company.
An individual?
It's an individual right now, John.
Okay.
It's a local psychologist.
Okay, great. Okay, thanks.
And the previous provider was local also.
Okay, just curious.
And like any vendor, it can change.
Any questions?
And that's one of the changes in this manual that you don't see, but the current manual names a specific provider.
Yeah.
And that really shouldn't be the case.
I agree, yes. Any other questions, man? Okay. You did that really quick, Sharon.
Any questions about it?
Sixteen.
Chapter sixteen.
Chapter sixteen is mine this evening. It's on, begins on page ninety-seven. Travel, meals and lodging, and the purpose of which is to ensure that employees who are required to travel and to conduct the business of the county are reimbursed for appropriate expenses, approved expenses such as travel, meals, lodging, and as are detailed in the chapter that comes. All travel must be approved by the department head or supervisor. And the travel, the county uses a per diem amount, which is subject to change over time. And the expenses that are reimbursable are meals, including taxes, tips, and maybe reversed, reimbursed up to the maximum per diem total for time away on county business. There are two types, no overnight stay and overnight stay. Reimbursements for meals made on a per diem basis. And the U.S. General Services Administration annual rate is the rate that is used. And the General Services Administration has documents, we have them for the state of Maryland, and they're adopted yearly by the federal government. And these are available to you when you get the additions that we've developed, if you're interested in that.
Mr. President.
Away, the.
An example of that is on your council table that he just referenced.
Oh, you did give it to the, good. Yeah, we got it.
Okay, great. Then I'm not gonna spend any more time on that. You've already reviewed it. I know, I know it's late. And then the next is with overnight stay. And the reimbursement for meals will be made on a per diem basis, either in whole or in part, at annually established per diem rates set by the GSA. And also, would, reimbursement would also include the full cost of any conference fees, parking, tolls, taxis, rental cars, and reasonable travel costs, which are documented by receipt. You'll see document, I'm not always going to mention it, but it's always, it's always by documentation by receipt.
Is this consistent with the current practice?
Go ahead.
Is this consistent with the current practice, or is this a change?
It is.
It's consistent?
Now, I'm not sure the GSA rate is currently, is currently the guide, but reimbursement by receipts is.
No, I mean the, you know, the percentage per diem rate and things like that, in terms of how the per diem rate is like split up if you leave at a certain time.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
The, you know, when you talk about how the expenditures are broken up by when you leave and things like that.
Well, I hadn't gotten to that page, but since you mentioned that, that's a change that we're recommending. That is, I don't wanna say much about nothing, but it's a whole lot more complicated than it needs to be.
Okay.
In our, in our thinking.
That was my question.
So if you do, to that, that's section sixteen oh three, and we're recommending that that be deleted in its entirety. There are a couple of other places where there's reference made, and that, that language would just come out, and I'm not even, I'm not gonna mention those. Now, not, mileage is in here. This is sixteen oh two D. Travel is not always by public conveyance or county vehicle. Sometimes people use their own vehicles, and that's out of necessity. If a county vehicle is available, then that's, that's the preferred choice for obvious reasons. And employees or county officials are reimbursed at the IRS rates that are adopted every year, and sometimes, once in a while, they change during the year, but that's not often. But we do use the IRS reimbursement rate. And of course, there is no mileage reimbursement if a county vehicle is used. Per diem means a day, and an employee cannot use excess per diems for that he or she didn't spend one day and save it up to move over to the next day. The reimbursement for a day is a day. And we've covered I in sixteen oh two. The reporting with receipts, an expense report will be required to be completed and submitted to the employee's department head within ten days of the return from the travel. And original receipts are required. If more than one person is covered by a receipt, the names of the persons involved by the receipt must be written on the back. Sixteen oh five, at the bottom of page ninety-eight, I call your attention to that. Elected officials will be reimbursed for reasonable actual expenditures documented by receipts. Thinking of reviewing this, we did not talk about this in our reviews, but I believe this is an appropriate place, based on experience, to include the Director of Administration as compared to the county executive and the council administrator with regard to the legislative body, because a high percentage of the time, travel involving one involves the key staff person, and that's who usually picks up the bill. So this would be an appropriate place for that to be located, I think, as well. And those expenses, for example, the council administrator's would, expense report would be reviewed and approved by the county council president, and in the case of the Director of Administration, presumably the county executive or whatever arrangements would be appropriate in the executive branch. And that's it for chapter sixteen. Any questions?
Question.
It's pretty straightforward the way we've tried to trim it down.
You didn't cover sixteen oh six, hours worked.
Oh, well, okay, I, that I thought was pretty straightforward. Travel during normal business hours is considered hours worked, and travel outside of normal business hours may be considered compensatory time or overtime in compliance with the compensatory overtime provisions of the manual, and there in other chapters. Thank you, thank you.
And the alcohol, sixteen oh seven. So I, I thought you wanted to finish it.
No, sixteen oh seven, yes.
Very simple?
Very simple.
No alcohol, county funds, okay.
Any other questions? Okay.
Okay, chapter seventeen, there's only a couple places where there are any major changes. Chapter seventeen is made up in large part by the existing chapter twenty-six of the current manual. A number of places we've improved verbiage without making any real change. The first change we made is in seventeen oh three. Basically, we, seventeen oh three A, which is on page ninety-nine, application for retirement. It provides that some, an employee seeking or contemplating retirement should contact HR less than sixty days prior to the anticipated date. It says notice of retirement should be in writing and provided to the employer's supervisor. And then you see the next sentence, providing less than sixty days' notice may result in delay of pension payments. That sentence is out of order. It should be after notification to HR. So essentially, the employee is going to retire, he notifies HR, and that's existing policy, and it should be done within sixty days. Reason for that, and it may have improved over the years, and I think it has improved. One of the things HR has to do is get the pension information from the actuary, enlist all the different options that the employee has, and that takes a period of time. That's why we put in there that if you don't, if you give less than sixty days' notice, if that information can't come back, instead of having a pension check the day after, the next month after you retire, it may be delayed some.
Ed.
Yes?
When you say may, that sounds like that could be up to whoever's doing the work, and depending on who it is, and is, should that be changed to would or shall be, or?
Ah.
I mean, that makes it discretionary on, you know, maybe it's somebody's friend, or maybe it's not, or, you know?
I was suspecting that HR would be doing it on a routine basis, and the only thing that would follow it up would be if CBIZ, if it's still CBIZ, delays in getting the report back. That's majority of times not gonna happen, because there's provisions that any employee can get up to a certain number of evaluations of where he stands in retirement. And I think most people who are contemplating retirement start looking out a year and getting those reports, once or twice over that year period before they get to the sixty-day period. I don't know of anybody who's ever been delayed in getting the pension the next month.
Is this chapter, the Retirement Plan, or is there a separate document?
No, that's a separate.
No, that's one of the first things, the first paragraph says, is that, and a number of other places, these are partial summaries of it, but the actual retirement plan is in the retirement document.
Right, and that's, that's what kinda confused me. I wasn't sure whether or not, since the Personnel Manual constantly refers to Retirement Plan, should we see the Retirement Plan to, or is that beyond our scope?
Well, you're perfectly, it's, it's a, it's a public document as such, it's formally approved.
But I say, see, should we be addressing that as well?
Well, the chapter, if you change, if there are changes, let me back up one more step. A Personnel Manual will be, will be, in whatever form you finally decide, will be adopted by legislation. I believe the Retirement Plan for Wycomico County was approved by legislation as well, wasn't it? That was before your time, it was before even Wycomico.
Yeah, that was before my time.
Okay. But it's.
No, we've amended it by resolution. You may recall that prior council, you all but as a prior council, did a number of changes to it. For example, we put a provision in there that said if, if you steal from the county, forfeit the pension.
I remember that.
So there's a number of different changes you can make to it. But all the terms relating to retirement are in that plan.
I didn't know whether that was part of your, the scope of your review or not.
No.
No, it was not.
Our scope is this type of thing.
But it's a separate document, maybe you should take a look at.
Okay.
And that's where you get seventeen oh four. I mean, over the years, there's been a number of different changes to how many years you have to have in, and this is a recital of all of them now. Otherwise, it's mainly, most of it is the same as existing. Yeah, the paragraph seventeen oh three B refers back to what Mr. Holloway was asking about. You can get two estimates of that first year, and most people are doing that. Most of the provisions of under seventeen oh four, dealing with health insurance eligibility, year of service, are out of twenty-six oh six B, in the existing plan, just restructured a little bit and put in different order, but it's basically there. If you have any questions about it, we can go over each, each one. The same thing for retirement. The biggest one is in seventeen oh five, on page one hundred. Talking about the county's provision of medical health coverage, dental and vision. Pause meaningful reflection on this one. This one seems to have caused the biggest concern from retirees. I'm not in touch with a lot of retirees, but I can tell you from personal practice, the change to Health, United Healthcare caused no, no hiccup for me personally, but each individual person is affected differently, mainly in the prescription area. Insurance companies can change their formulary often, and that can have a large impact. So one of the tasks that the committee looked at was what we could do about it. And starting in paragraph seventeen oh five A, the fourth line down, is I attempt to kick the bucket to you. And it should be, I mean, it is a very difficult, mainly policy decision. Word of mouth, we, the committee didn't have any access to actual numbers. The number of retirees impacted is relatively small. Some of the retirees I know personally were able to go back to United Healthcare, get the formulary changed, makes a, I don't know if they changed the formula, but make an alternative for them. But what we have suggested, again, as a placeholder for you, is that when, when you reach the age that Medicaid becomes mandatory, retirees would be allowed to remain.
Medicare.
I'm sorry, Medicare, not Medicaid. The retirees would be allowed to remain on active employee health insurance as secondary, which is similar to the way it was before you went into United Health. Or they could go to the supplementary plan. And the county would provide a trust for catastrophic prescription costs for retirees that have prescriptions that are not covered under the Medicaid, Medicare supplemental plan. I think there was some confusion about what this meant, what we intended it to mean, and that is basically, what we intended it to mean is that the county, meaning the executive and the council, would come up with the trust terms. This would be very similar to what was done for volunteer firemen's health insurance, created a trust fund for the, not health insurance, life insurance.
Life benefit.
Death benefit. And I believe a similar thing was done for the deputies to have a trust fund or some funds available if they were either killed in line of duty or injured. So it'd be something along that lines, but primarily it would be the county determining what the terms are.
Can I interrupt a minute?
Sure.
And Wayne's in the audience, so maybe he could reflect on this. Being, you've got this, this trust for the fireman death benefit, and Mr. Baker said the, also the sheriff's deputies, would it be advantageous for us to put those three trust funds together and manage them in that fashion, or?
You're really talking apples and oranges here.
Uh-huh.
Catastrophic pharmaceutical coverage, we have already had an actuary estimate that. I mean, you're talking about a million-dollar trust, just to set it up. I mean, pharmaceuticals, when the, when the pharmaceutical coverages in group policies have been exhausted, you're talking about enormous medical costs. So I think you need to be extremely careful with this, very, very careful with this.
So what?
Now, by being to address what Mr. Charlesburg is saying, that's what I was trying to explain, is we're not saying set up a trust that will pay dollar for dollar, every out-of-pocket cost for catastrophic prescriptions. We're saying set up a trust to address the issue, if that's the way you want to go. You would define the terms. You can say, we're only gonna give you ten percent copay, you can say we can cover it a hundred percent, but as Mr. Charlesburg pointed out, some of these are paying seven or eight thousand dollars a month, and that could be catastrophic, to set up a trust that would pay all of that for the lifetime of the employee. So all we're saying is that is a mechanism that you could put into place for whatever you decided you were gonna pay.
I was, I was misinterpreted this, to think that already the county executive's office had probably worked on this.
Yeah, and I don't, if, if, if you were gonna do that, why wouldn't you do that for active employees? I'm not quite sure I understand the philosophy.
Let me, may I just, just comment on, on how this came about? I think you all will remember, early in this council term, you were reviewing a portion of a new Personnel Manual that this cost of prescriptions, you had numbers of employees come in, and some were very much agonized. This is.
Well, this mainly retirees.
Huh?
This was mainly retirees.
This was all retirees. Current employees are, are covered under the terms of current employees, current coverage, and it's with care first. But this, this is, this is altogether different. And this language was, we did not have access to any research or actuarial figures. This is an idea only to be given consideration, that if the council and the executive were to try to address the catastrophic costs that we've just talked about, it was not our thinking that it would be a hundred percent county, paid by the county. We changed, we recommended the change of one word, well, added two words. The county will provide a trust to defray catastrophic prescription costs. That's the amount to be determined, that it could change from year to year, depending upon whether or not there was money appropriated in the budget for that purpose.
Wayne.
And you may scrap it altogether, because it may not, when, when the, when the numbers come in, we haven't seen any of that, it just may not be possible. But I think we, we thought that you would want an effort to be made to address issues that were not covered.
I, I thought Joe had another question for him.
Yeah, I was at that meeting at the Civic Center with retirees, and you, there may have been concern with prescriptions that night.
Yes, sir.
And you made, and I can't quote you per.
It's a doughnut hole.
Yeah, the doughnut hole, but you said that the county would try to do something to fulfill that doughnut hole, so has that been done? Has there been any work on that?
Joe, I haven't found anything that would, that would reasonably cover the kinds of catastrophic costs that we're talking about. I mean, you, and you've gotta define catastrophic cost. If you, and I think everybody here knows, that about eighty percent of your lifetime medical costs are incurred your last six to nine months of life, and they can be enormous. And I, I just urge caution, because we're getting into an area where the fiscal impacts, particularly as, as you cast out the direction that health coverages and health costs are taking, we could be taking on something that, that just is not, just is not sustainable.
I understand.
But I mean, I understand the doughnut hole issue, Joe.
Yeah, and I understand that, but also understand that a lot of folks that are in the retirement system are going, are going to be in the retirement system.
You're looking at one of them.
Soon, are gonna be, you know, they're, they're expecting what, what was promised them. So, you know, should there not be something changed first about new hires that are coming into the system, so they're not expecting this, and that's something that's not been done? And further, further attention being given to what's the doughnut hole, so you say?
Yeah, certainly, if we could find a reasonable solution to the doughnut hole, we would like to find that. Point of clarification, however, is that I think it was widely interpreted that this was a change in the Personnel Manual. The Personnel Manual that exists now has always stipulated that retirees, when they reach Medicare age, go into the plan that we put these folks in. The trigger for it, Joe, and you may remember this, was the significant increases in our premiums two years ago. And in making that change, I'm going by memory, Joe, but I think the county saved on the order of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars by making a change that was already embedded in the Personnel Manual. Now, certainly, I agree with you that, that there should be discussion about what we can do, because people are living longer, and, and they're gonna need prescription medications for much, much longer periods of time. I'm just urging caution when we begin to talk about a catastrophic trust, because it's, it can get really expensive.
Part of it too, Wayne, was, you know, with the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars savings that the county made.
Right.
Would it be possible, depending on, you know, the degree of people who were left, who fell through that doughnut hole, would it be possible to take any portion of that three hundred and fifty thousand dollars and compensate the few individuals who were having problems?
Yeah, to do a set aside, and, and one of the things that, one, one of the things that you, I think, John, have to be careful of when you begin to go down that road is, you, you don't want to set yourselves up where you begin to have, for lack of any better terms, a discriminatory.
Right.
Insurance benefit. So could we do something like that? I'm pretty sure we could figure something like that out. It's gotta be affordable, but we also have to craft it in a way that we can't be charged, if you will, with discriminatory practices. That's the reason I asked a question about active employees, because if you're gonna extend that benefit to retired employees and not extend that same benefit to active employees, that's a slippery slope. So I'm just simply urging caution.
Right.
I'm not arguing the point, I'm urging caution.
Well, active employees are covered fully already.
No, there's, there's still, no, there's a cap on coverages. There's a cap on pharmaceutical coverage.
There what?
There's a cap on, there's a cap on, there's a. There's a cap on, there's a cap on, there's a stop loss.
I don't think there was any complaint about that, that was understood. They were just concerned that when the policy changed, they fell through the loophole there between Medicare and everything.
I understand the issue, understand the issue.
Yeah, thank you. And I really appreciate the fact that you put this in there because we knew we had a serious problem that needed to be addressed. And this is an effort, as you said, you've left it-
It was a placeholder because-
Place holder, right.
Well beyond our ability to-
The only thing is, you know, to go further than this, in light of what Wayne is saying too, this can't be open-ended or vague. It can't be, it has to be very specific on, and it might even be so much to say that in this particular section, we refer to another document that gets established with parameters.
That's a possibility.
Yeah.
But as you say, we were-
It's great to have it in because it has to be, it has to be a discussion, yeah. The other thing I had is, how would this be administered? That's the other thing Wayne suggested about, you know, what, at whose discretion? And that really is important, how are you going to administer this? Who's going to have that authority that the, you know, insurance companies, they have all their plans in place as to how they do it. What would we do? You know, where are you going to send them? And I'm not being facetious, I'm honestly actually asking you, where are you going to send them?
Well, we were thinking that at the very least, there would be a subject to appropriation clause in here so that it's not a, it's not an open-ended free pass to the treasury.
It's really good to have it here as a discussion.
At any rate, that's probably, that's probably the biggest potential in this whole exercise. But then again, you got more, you got more concern expressed by employees on that as well.
Yes, you do.
And it probably should be made by a committee of people rather than an individual.
Right. Wonder how we're going to get there.
And to the best of my personal knowledge, none of the three members of this volunteer group are, thank the Lord. Thank the Lord, covered by, or troubled by any of these very high causes. So.
Other than letting you have that problem back, the only other change is really not substantial, and that is on the top of page 101, paragraph A and B. The same concept is in the existing manual, basically said retiree must make arrangements with HR to pay the premium. It was a little bit more general in the existing manuals, so we provided for both the retiree and the surviving spouse and dependents is if you fall two months behind in arrears, you're terminated from coverage. And those are the only items for you in 17.
Would you need an appeals board for that?
Pardon?
Would you need any, would they, any process?
Yeah, that's relative to tell them if you don't pay your health insurance and have to notice, you're going to be cut off.
But I will, I'll just add this, it's not related to the subject, but yes, it is the retiree's responsibility to make sure that he or she makes the monthly payments, but HR makes that as convenient as it possibly can because they send out a notice every month.
Okay.
And it's, it's not something that can, oh, gosh, I forgot to pay my health insurance. I mean, somebody may say that, but the county, I can't imagine the county doing anything that would be more helpful than what they're doing.
Okay.
Okay, the closer, chapter 18, personnel records management. This is very similar to chapter five in the old manual, the 2003 that's already adopted. The purpose of this is that, to establish and maintain clear lines of authority for the processing of personnel transactions and management of all personnel records. The first part of this, nothing has changed. I'll just point out a couple of things that I think are important. If you don't have any questions on 1801, I do want to go to 1802 because it's important that that we know that this has not changed from the 2003. What's happened here, and this is a matter of processes, okay? And I'll take you back to a time probably none of you were here, I'm not sure. But the finance department gave part of its space to the IT department. They housed payroll in the back where IT went. The payroll department was moved downstairs where there was space. It was not a procedure, it was not anything more than the director of finance saying that we're running out of space here. If this department is going to take it, we have to put these people somewhere. So those people in payroll and the processes of payroll went to human resources because there was space there.
Just a physical location.
It was a physical location. So in 1802, when in, if you look at A, it says the director of human resources shall be designated, shall be designated as the official custodian of all personnel files. Now, this document says all payroll files because of the physical relocation of those people. And ultimately, that function was best suited in that area, okay?
In the finance?
The finance, the payroll-
Physically.
The payroll people physically moved, and I believe at that time it was a person, not several people. But they physically moved from the back of the finance office downstairs for space.
We always compare ourselves to other counties. How does other counties handle that? Does other counties have payroll in finance or do they have it in HR?
I wouldn't know that.
That wouldn't be too hard.
Wayne's weak.
That's not hard to find.
It's all over the place.
It's all over the place.
Yeah, it's not hard to find.
So you're suggesting the payroll files-
I'm not making a suggestion.
Well, this is what's being proposed here.
No, we didn't change it.
No, we didn't change it, it's already there.
It's already, it's in the current- It's scratched through.
I'm sorry?
It's scratched through on our payroll.
The payroll files are scratched through. It's the only thing, I think, in this entire document that actually has a strike through.
And that was for our purposes because I reminded them that it was only a physical relocation.
Okay, so are you suggesting that the payroll files just, as is a normal fact, are in finance and not in HR anyway? Should be?
I'm not going to make a suggestion, I'm-
Is that what the, is that what the strike through suggests?
What the strike through suggests is that where they were-
Right.
Is where they should be housed. If you want to change that, then you have to do something with this document that makes that happen. The 2003 document and what's proposed here is the same. And the director of finance shall have the overall responsibility for establishing, maintaining, and coordinating all county employee records related to payroll functions, and then it lists them. It's exactly the same in the old document, we didn't change it. For us, it was a matter of-
Well, if we were to want to change that and put payroll files under director of finance, then we would have to add as another bullet point?
No, it's already in there, that's why it's-
Is it in there?
It's already there.
Where is it?
Eighteen, eighteen O two B.
It's already there.
Director of finance shall have, not director of human resources, B.
I see B, B, all the bullets. Where are payroll files? Are all those bullet points the payroll files?
Under finance?
See payroll deductions, payroll deductions.
Again, this was done before some of the other processes that are being, many times, things were done because they were efficient practices. They weren't policies.
Best management practices.
Best management practices. The personnel action notification, when it, when we used it in paper form, was three copies. One went to finance because finance had to always confirm that the money was there. The other copy went to HR because it goes in the employee's permanent file.
Right.
And then the other copy went to the department who made the recommendation for whatever the change was. So we are not suggesting any change. It's already stated what's in what department. If for some reason you want to move it, or the executive proposes to move it in order to continue it as it is practiced, then they would have to make that change.
So we would strike out the term all payroll files, that would be it? Because all the bullet points under director of finance are payroll files, is that correct?
As it's written, as it's written.
Yeah, make it clearer than that, that would be the concept, Joe.
Okay.
We'll just clear it.
I didn't know if payroll files themselves were a separate entity of information, for lack of better words.
The personnel action notification form is designed such that it incorporates everything that you need on one document now and before it was divided.
Okay.
There are no other changes, or that's not a change, but there are no other, unless you have questions. Talks about the release of information, the employee having access to their file. Department heads can't circumvent or deny an employee's right to review. If they want to review their personnel files, somebody from HR should be with them.
Should the, under documents, et cetera, et cetera, shouldn't copies of those files be kept with the personnel records in HR? Or are they, are copies kept there? Looking at 1807A.
What's your question, sir?
Well, above that, the last sentence says, however, as such files are working files and are not part of the official personnel records, the files are not subject to review.
Those are files that supervisors allow to keep themselves, they do it as part of an employee's evaluations. They might have particular notes on an employee if in fact, for instance, if they didn't want to discipline the employee but they wanted to make a note that something happened so that if they had to go back to it, it would be part of their own record.
That wouldn't be copied to HR?
Not necessarily.
Not in prior practice, anyway.
It might now, I don't know, but-
I'm not really familiar with all the, you know, how it all goes back and forth, and I'm really not, I don't do it.
You wouldn't be expected to.
So I'm just asking, it would seem if there was, if there were some type of reports that a direct, that a supervisor or department head-
Formal evaluations, formal evaluations are for their records, to which, like you're referring to.
But it's a, it's a working file, again, if you had an employee who, maybe they were late and, but they were such that-
Somewhat in consequence.
Somebody had, sorry?
I'll give you an example.
I say somewhat in consequence.
Yeah, yeah, and they would just keep records for it, but could build.
So and so came in two minutes late. Supervisor might make a note of that on such and such a date. And then over, over a period of time, the supervisor might say, whoa, man, I better go talk to so and so. Then that conversation may be informal or formal, that's all spelled out in here. And if it's formal, then the supervisor has documentation that justifies the need to counsel the employee.
Okay.
And it may or may not, depending on how serious it was, be an informal complaint that goes down to the employee's record.
Okay, thank you.
Does that clarify it?
Yeah, yep.
We do have one other. Under 1804, D.
D, other?
Other, department heads and other management officials within the direct line of supervision or officials as designated by law may review an employee's personnel record. And we are striking with the approval of the director of human resources because a department head or manager or somebody who is authorized by county law should be able to look at a personnel file if they have reason to. And of course, the county attorney can do it at any time.
So that, you're, we're striking that.
With the approval of the director of human resources. And unless you have questions, that's it.
Okay, any questions on that particular chapter? And then 19, or just definitions?
Just definitions, you know, we went through in the existing definition manual, that section, deleted definitions that don't exist in the manual and corrected the other ones, so hopefully they're all there.
Okay. Any questions? Call you, I'd like to call your attention to two definitions. The first is under definitions of, this is appointed positions. There are two definitions and there's some clarifying wording that you may want to look at. What is written is appointed position, a position that is at will. An employee in this position serves at the pleasure and discretion of the appointing officials. Subject to the personnel manual, that is to say, appointed positions are subject to the personnel manual except chapter 13. Chapter 13 is the grievance chapter. And appointed officials do not have that, the protections that might be provided by the personnel manual. In other words, an appointed person can't appeal his supervisor, the person responsible for hiring, the council, in your case, in the legislature, the executive, and the executive branch. But appointed, appointed positions do have access to health insurance, do have access to retirement. These are, that's the way it is. But this clarifies the only place, in the definitions at least, that appointed employees do not have, they are not subject to the chapter 13 of the personnel manual, but they're, they're subject to other parts.
Are you suggesting that that terminology be added?
Yes, for the reasons that I just spoke. The other change is down at the very, well, I don't know where it is, is it's, we think there's a need because there, in the, in the health insurance provisions of the chat, of the manual, the term domestic partner is used, and domestic partner may have many definitions to different people and circumstances. So we suggest you might want to add language that say, that says a domestic partner under this manual is, is the same as defined in the Code of Public Rules and Regulations of the state of Maryland, Health General Services Section 101, and that's the health section of article 101. And because in order, the state has a very specific set of criteria of what constitutes a domestic partner that will have, and you explain this, you're the lawyer.
You're almost there.
You're almost there.
You're almost there.
So we should refer to the state's definition, what you're saying.
Yeah, Health General 611.
Which definition was that?
Domestic partner, it's not in, it's not in there, Matt, it's not in there. We, since, since the term is used in a very important section of the manual, it deserves a definition. And we would suggest you consider the definition used by the state of Maryland. That's the short answer.
Any questions, Wayne? So I guess the question that I would have would be, with what changes you're suggesting here at the table and things that you say aren't, you're not suggesting maybe that we strike them out, but there's a strikeout on there. What are you going to bring to us, such as this recommendation you have on this definition, so that we know what the final changes are and what the final documentation might look like?
Well, I think you deserve, you deserve that clarification, but we need some additional information from you as to, there have been notes taken.
Okay.
Okay.
I've heard several council members say that they want more discussion. And I don't know just what you mean by that, but I guess-
So we'll, we'll go through the process of a couple of work sessions to try to iron out what we've heard from you, and what maybe we want to change. And then I'm guessing we're going to send that information back to you, and a final document will come back to us, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, eventually, the final document would be an entire personnel manual in the form of legislative bill.
We also need, we also have to be reviewed by the executive's office.
Yeah, we got to get, we have work sessions with executives.
Things that you haven't reviewed yet, at least, and we haven't reviewed yet either, and that is comments of employees that have come in. And the executive sent a communication to, I think, the council, and those, those are certainly worthy of being addressed.
I, I was under the impression that the committee had reviewed the comments from the employees and the executive.
I didn't say that.
Well, you reviewed the old comments on the old manual, is that correct? Employee comments?
Yeah, we, we drafted this, we looked at the-
We reviewed way back when, at the early, at the beginning of your session, at the beginning of your term.
Right.
But that's, that's no longer in existence.
No, so no employee comments on this manual have been taken into consideration, and no comments from the executive on this manual-
That's right.
Have been taken into consideration.
All of that had been forwarded to-
But this is a new manual.
Oh, yeah, I understand.
Yeah.
But I, I just assumed that the comments that came in more recently, and the, a lot of it came from the executive's office, had been forwarded.
It's going to be our job to incorporate that.
Well, we can, if that's your wish, we can give you our thinking on, on those.
They have been provided with the employee comments, as well as the executive's letter with his comments, but they have not been discussed as a group, if that helps.
Okay.
We still have ways to go.
If you want us to do that, we will.
Yeah, I think a clear direction on that, I don't want to muddy this water, but my understanding was that you wanted us to, because we had done it, to present to you what we had. And we've done that.
Okay, laying the groundwork.
That's the groundwork, yeah, so.
Are you saying you quit?
Yeah, I quit, this job doesn't pay much.
Could be presumptuous, I think probably we need to have the next series of work sessions with the executive's office in some form, to figure out, all right,
Absolutely.
what do they think about this?
Absolutely, and-
And then we can have work sessions with the employee comments, or with employees, if we're allowed to, to talk about this. So long, like Joe said, it's, we're just the beginning here, so.
It is, and you definitely need their involvement.
I think between us and with Laura's help, we could generate a document like this, that has just got the few changes that we recommended, like I discussed very early, that that one sentence was out of place, and give you that, and then you can consider all comments, employees and executives, and decide what changes to make.
All right.
Some comments are going to be pretty easy to, to address, and there'll be a few that take quite a bit of discussion.
All right. Okay.
But we have not, we have not taken that step as, as among the three of us. But we will, if that's what you want us to do.
Okay. Smile. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Didn't see anything yet.
Man, that's, huh? Next item on the agenda is the Hidden Pond Subdivision Forest Conservation Open Space Eastern.
That's wet out there. I was, I was going to take, first time I went out, I was going to take a truck, but I'm afraid I might start. I was going to-
How's everybody? Tired?
First night of the year, I'm afraid I'd get stuck.
I've asked Mr. Parker to come here and explain this plat, because it's pretty well nuanced.
Okay.
So I'm going to let him talk, if you guys have any forest conservation questions, I'd be glad to answer those when he's done.
Okay.
Okay. First of all, thank you for having me, my name is Brock Parker, I'm with Parker and Associates, we're the, are the original surveyors and planners of this subdivision. Back in, geez, probably two thousand nine, two thousand ten, this project started off as it appears today. The project kind of stagnated when the economy did, so it's now just started taking off. The roads are in, several houses are being built, as development progresses, things in the community change, things in the development. Parameters of, of the, the environment, they change as well. This is a very complicated plat, there's several different things going on with it. Primarily, the reason why we're here before you is the relocation and the elimination of some forest conservation easements on the property. But I think it's probably relevant to fit, to, to explain exactly what's going on with the plat, and how, you know, a little tiny pebble turned into a large snowball that is this plat we're looking at. You've heard it all before, at the planning commission level, but it, it kind of started with the, the lot one A in the corner, as you look at the plat, the bottom left corner. The way that lot was originally configured was the house was situated directly on Walnut Tree Road. The owner of that property caught when that there was a large poultry operation being developed across the street. He then wanted the ability to be able to build farther back off the road, so he's not sitting right on top of that area. So therefore, we've restructured, we're proposing to restructure the shape of his lot, so that you see the first area in the pink, lot one A, that outlines where his new lot will be. Where his new lot is being proposed is smack dab in the middle of a forest conservation easement that was established on the record plat. So we're trying to jiggle that forestry area, eliminate some, add some, to balance out the original forest conservation requirements for that lot, so he can have a more amenable building lot. The second action on the plat is, if you look over on the right side, there's a little kind of a backwards D in the area. That was a forest conservation area that was established around where the lot lines were supposed to be, which was bound with a ditch that wasn't built in accordance with the plan. That property line was then wiggled to go straight into some forest conservation area, it had to be eliminated and restructured. Then the bigger bulk of this area is the removal of a forest conservation mitigation bank. When the developers of the project originally developed this, this property, they exceeded their forest conservation requirements by conserving an additional, or by proposing to plant an additional acreage of trees on the site, in addition to what their subdivision required them to do. Their thought back then was, they had so much development being planned, they were going to sell these easements or utilize them on their future projects. Given the fact that development has pretty much stagnated in this area, they've then decided they want to remove that forest conservation bank and return the property back into agricultural production. So end of the day, we are removing and moving around some lot lines, we're restructuring the shape of some of the lots here, and we're also moving and relocating some forest conservation areas, but we're also reducing the total amount of forest conservation acreage that we're providing, simply because it's not required as part of the subdivision that was originally proposed. But it's just a fact of the economy, and those easements are never going to sell, the property owners would rather return that back to agricultural production.
So you probably, what you did back in oh nine, you, you did more forest conservation than was needed, probably because there was land you couldn't build on anyway, right?
Yes, yes.
So you over, you overconserved it.
Yeah, so, you know, just, just to pick a number, I was going to pick round numbers, you know, there was ten, ten acres of forest conservation required for the subdivision. They had twenty-five acres of open space, so they just put it all in forest conservation easements, said they would plant the additional fifteen acres. It never got planted, they figured that those extra fifteen acres, again, making up numbers, those extra fifteen acres they could use on their next few projects that they were developing, which never really happened. So now they don't, the, the forest conservation areas were never planted, the easements were never sold, there's no demand for those easements, so they would like to return that back to agriculture. Not future, not, no development, the development rights are tapped for this property.
Is that good to me? What, what are we looking at from here on?
The planning commission, yeah, Tom.
You mean process wise?
Yes.
So I guess next we have to have the public hearing to release the easement. This, our staff has recommended that we do approve, that you guys approve it.
Okay.
Just because it's set up as a bank, and nothing's been sold in the bank, so it's really, the, I believe it was nineteen point three acres of what was required for the development. That's been preserved in the, in the yellow on the, on the plat there, so we're, we're good with it.
Yeah, something else I wanted to, I failed to mention, is that your, your plat reviewer for Compaq County has insisted that all property owners in this development sign off on this plat in recognition of the fact that, you know, they bought a lot that had a forest conservation area, now it's being reverted back to farmland, they have all agreed to sign the plat at the end of the day.
Okay, okay. Any other questions, Mr. Man? We're all in consensus to move it forward?
Good.
Right, okay, we're good?
Thank you all, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thanks for waiting.
Just think, if we put you on the agenda for seven, you'd be at a seven to five.
Believe it or not, it was worth it. Again, thank you all, have a good night.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the supplemental lease agreement, Salisbury-by-Compaq Airport. Wayne, you're about the only one left.
Yeah, this, this is very straightforward. The FAA field office is located in the space that we're looking at here. This is, I think, if you noticed, a standard FAA small space lease form. What's housed in that area is the, are the NAVAids for the pilots, so it's the, it's the ILS. And then, when the pilots leave instrument landing, it turns, it turns over to the, to the visual aids. I forget exactly what they're called, but this, this is the group who, who manages that equipment, and they're housed in that space. So it's a simple extension of the, of the existing lease for the space that they occupy.
Wayne, just, just to be clear, the GSA really determines what the rent's going to be delta.
Exactly.
We don't have, it's not an option.
We don't negotiate with them.
Right.
They send us a lease, and here we are.
No discussion, really.
Correct. Other than, when would you like to have the lease?
Right.
Standard form lease, you standard scheduled rent rates. And it's necessary, obviously, to have, have airline passenger service.
Right, any questions? Where does it go from here? Do we, is there anything formal, formal that we have to do through resolution, or?
I guess you have to have a public hearing.
Yes, it requires a public hearing, three weeks worth of advertising.
It's a multi-year lease.
Okay.
We can have that January the second, at six P M.
All right.
It continues on month to month in the meantime, so that, you know, we're not under any, any duress.
Okay, all right, Wayne, thank you very much. I obtain a motion from council to adjourn, so that we can go into closed session.
So, oh.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, we're now in closed session.